Good evening and welcome to the November 20 regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I am Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling the meeting to order. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Byrd.
Present.
Vreeman.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Sol.
Here.
Rowan.
Present.
Shay.
Here.
Schultz. Mayor Box.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years. First with an opening prayer this evening by Councilmember Sol, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us.
Higher power, I come to you with gratitude and thanksgiving for an opportunity to serve your community and to conduct the business at hand. I ask for infinite wisdom and knowledge to steward with foresight, integrity for the city of Holland residents. At this time, I'd also like to thank you for our native brothers and sisters. We honor their heritage, culture, and acknowledge their contributions to this establishment and the growth to the United States. I'd like to also thank you for the veterans who sacrificed to defend our nation. Namaste.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Belinda. Next item on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and they have been reviewed by council as part of our council packet. And they'll be enacted with one motion and one vote. And unless a member of the public asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda, or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda, and then it will be placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before we do that, Brenda, would you please review the consent agenda items for us?
Item 4A, excuse the absence of Councilmember Schultz. 4B, approve the minutes of the November 6, 2024 regular and November 13, 2024 study special enclosed minutes. Accept executed oath of office. 4D, 16th Street widening project. 4E, grant of four utility easements for Holland City Fire Project. 4F, a resolution for insurance claims administration settlement authority. 4G, a declaration of surplus materials for November 2024. 4H, amend the HBPW water utility notice of intent to issue tax-exempt revenue bonds from $10 million to an amount not to exceed $12 million. 4I, the Hart Solar Second Amendment amended and restated power purchase commitment authorization. 4J, claims filed against the city. 4K, the Holland Museum adopt a resolution for a special event liquor license. 4L, approve the purchase of one 2025 Ford Interceptor utility vehicle for Police Patrol Division. And 4M, accept the July financial report.
Thank you, Brenda. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
It has been moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd, any discussion? Seeing none? Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
And Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the opportunity for the public to be able to address council not only at our regular meetings, but also at our study sessions, and also to address all of our boards, committees, and commissions. We do have guidelines that we ask you to follow. We ask that each person only speak to council one time. You're limited to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means your time has expired, and we are strict about that. Please note that this is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to speak to council about any subject that you would like to speak to us on, but we don't engage in discussion at this time, nor do we answer questions. But if there's a question that staff may be able to answer for you, they could circle back to you either after the meeting or at a later date. When you come to speak to council, please approach the microphone. Please state your name and municipality for the record, because we like to know whether you're a resident of the city of Holland or not. And also, please address all of your comments to council and speak into the microphone, because the meeting is recorded, it's being broadcast, and the people at home would like to hear what you have to say as well. With that being said, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come to the microphone. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Theo Robert, and I live in Holland Township. Members of the council, as well as the mayor, I come to you because what I'm going to tell you is basically something of public interest. And that is retaliation by the city of Holland. And so, I come to you because you all have the investigative authority over the city manager. And so, what I am requesting, and I will submit to you my formal complaint for investigation against the city manager. And let me just be clear in terms of what I want. If you guys determined during your investigation that the city manager did not do what I am going to talk about, then I will then submit my formal complaint to him to investigate the bodies that did retaliate against me, which is Deputy City Attorney Carl Thornwall conspired with the police department to retaliate against me. And this is what happened. 108 days ago, I received a written citation, as well as a written warning. And I went through the process of going through the formal hearing and the formal hearing. I had the formal hearing because I appealed 108 days later. During the actual court hearing, Deputy City Attorney Carl Thornwall asked the judge to then take the written warning and to make it into a citation 108 days later. The judge then asked him why he could not give an actual legitimate reason why he wanted to change a written warning into a citation 108 days later. There was no aggravated circumstances, but the only thing that was, did happen was that I engaged in what was called protected activities. That meant I came before you back in July, and I talked to you about the hypocrisy that went on in the police department. Not only that, I filed four complaints against officers of the police department, and those investigations are still ongoing. I also requested documentation through the Freedom of Information Act. All these activities are actually protected by statute. But yet, by engaging in those, the city of Holland retaliated against me. So during this court hearing, the judge actually asked Deputy Attorney, City Attorney Thornwall, why you wanted to change this, and he could not give an answer. The judge then said to him, "This is retaliation against Mr. Robert." That's what the actual judge told him. I knew that from the beginning, the judge knew it, and he shut it down. So my request to you, I first have to discover if our city attorney, our city manager, gave the directive to Mr. Thornwall to retaliate against me. That's why I asked you for your investigation against him. If you find that he did not do that, then I will submit my formal investigation to him against the police department and Deputy Attorney Thornwall for the retaliation. Now, I've already submitted a formal complaint to the Attorney Grievance Commission against Mr. Thornwall for his behavior, for his retaliatory behavior. But that is what I am requesting from you. I will submit my request to, I think it was Brenda or the other receptionist in the office up there. I will submit those formal complaints to you in writing to determine if our city manager had any hand in the retaliation that came against me by the Deputy City Attorney and the police department. And if not, I then shall submit my formal complaint through him to investigate the Deputy City Attorney and the police department for their retaliation against me. So I thank you all for your time. But again, this is of public concern, because no taxpaying member or member of this community should be retaliated against by anyone from the city of Holland for engaging in protective activities. That is unacceptable. And should Mr. City Manager find that Mr. Thornwall or anyone from the police department did conspire, they should be immediately removed from employment with the city of Holland. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the opportunity for the public to be able to speak directly to council in person during our meetings, we do also have an email address where you can send written communication to all council members. That is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Those emails are received by council members, they're reviewed by council members, and when we have them, we accept them into the record at our regular meetings. We do not read them out loud during the meetings, but accept them into the record. We do not have any this evening, but I always like to make sure that the public is aware of those. Next item on the agenda, that is item 12, Echo 6.1 gifts. Brenda, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gift. For the Department of Public Safety Services K-9 program, $32,431.35 in donations were collected from the 2024 K-9 golf outing fundraiser event held on June 28, 2024. The K-9 program also received an in-kind donation of two Yeti coolers from Crown Motors valued at $525. It is recommended these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to the donors.
Wonderful, thank you. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve those gifts and receive them, and with the token of our appreciation.
We have a motion to accept the gifts, is there support?
Support.
Moved and support, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item 12, Echo 6.2, approved contract for architectural and engineering services for the new Holland City Recreation Center. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and members of the public, both here in person and watching at home. I'm going to give a little context and introduction, not only to 6.2, but also 6.3, because they kind of go together. And I think it's worthwhile just kind of reminding everybody the journey that we've been on, and again, the context, and that we still have steps in front of us should you approve this tonight. First of all, let's talk a little bit about the need, if I could. And we know that Garrett Thalen is here in the audience too, from our recreation department, and can talk about different things or answer any questions that you might have. But council all knows, right, because we've been talking about this for a while, that we have great partners in the community, primarily at the schools, both public and private, where we've had a long history of doing our programming, internal programming, primarily right inside programming. We have great parks that we do stuff with, but certain times of the year, and really year-round, we've always done that programming in other facilities, because we haven't had our own. What we've found, there's a variety of reasons, but two primary things. One, space has been more difficult to find, both because schools are becoming more busy, but also in kind of the era of safety concerns and different things, it's been more difficult to use those spaces. Plus, we're a pretty active community and have a great set of programming that we do. So I even just looked in our budget book. We always have some kind of real high-level numbers. And year after year, we just have significantly more participants in our rec programming, which is fantastic. And it's primarily youth, it's not all. But we're up well over 7,000 participants in our rec programming. So that just continues to grow. So the need is that we're having less space, that's a little bit more difficult to coordinate, and we have more programming. And really, what a lot of times what it falls down to, and Garrett could talk to this, about how many different spots we're on, we're at in any given night, and how if one thing happens in one other location where there was a mix-up or there was a double booking, or something happened, the scrambling that we have to do, not only to find another place, but probably more importantly, that then we're making contacts to the people that are either participating or bringing their youth to that location. And a lot of times what happens is you might be in one program, that you might be in multiple locations through the length of that program in a given season. So we think an opportunity exists there. So capital planning, you all know this, right? But not only do we have a 50-year capital plan that's more internal, that we then convert into a five-year capital plan that you all adopt as part of the budget. But I went back, and actually, since I've been city manager, and Matt actually found, going back at least to the 2017 budget, we've had in the council adopted capital plan that we had an intent to move towards building the rec center. And we've been following that. And you know that in other large building projects, what we do is we don't just have a number in a future year, but usually a year, in this case, two years before that. We actually have another number where we put money in there to start the process to do the solid planning that we participate in. And Matt will talk more about what that looks like in this recommendation that you have tonight. So this year, we do have the money in the budget. So along with the recommendation that we have for you tonight, that's money that we've set aside in the budget. And also, the project that we're talking about would not break ground until the summer of 2026. And largely, just as a reminder of kind of how we do our long-term financial planning, we've always targeted fiscal year 2027 as being the year to do this, because we have another bond issue that's coming off the books at that year. And we're really taking a look at this would be something that we would use, not all, but some of that capacity from that bond, to do what we think is this very important project. We have a 20 million, just as a reminder, in two fiscal years out, we have a $20 million placeholder for that. That doesn't mean necessarily all that money comes from a bond or from internal money. And partly, that's because, to be reminded, we had a surprise, I had a surprise phone call several years ago of a very generous donor that, after a few conversations, his estate basically said $5 million towards a project for a new building that supports the needs of the city. And we kind of went through various things, and this is that project that we're allocating that to. So you can kind of know in the back of your head, you already got $5 million of the 20 million covered. So we're really excited about this. You will also remember that we've really zeroed in on 16th and Fairbanks as the preferred location, and that's the location that we've really looked at here, that it will be integrated into what we all know as a very active and successful facility at Bows Pool during the summer. I hope that gives you kind of a general overview. And then just a reminder too, the action that you may take tonight is not, is far from the final action, right? This is only a step in the process. So when we, I'll just say, when we do other typical larger projects like this, you would have this step that really allows us to do a needs assessment and do the design and get a, you know, a better probable estimate of cost and put design documents to go out for bid and all those types of things. But before we do anything, council would also need to take a vote at a later date to actually put this out to bid. And then, after that, to actually accept the bids. And then, if, as we're recommending, if we continue to move forward, to actually go out and bond for a portion of this cost. So this is far from the last action that we would ask you to take. But I think it's important for you and everyone to know the steps in the process that we've followed successfully on other projects and are definitely recommending also here tonight. So with that, I'm going to ask Matt to get into the details of both the architectural and engineering services first. And then, we'll answer any questions that you might have, and then we'll probably double back and take a look at the construction management side of things. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Keith, you covered quite a bit of ground there, so I'll have to modify what I'm going to say, as usual. Yeah, so I guess before we get into these a little bit, I did notice that both of these would be subject to approval as to form from the city attorney that was left off the reports. But Vince will be reviewing that and have to sign off any contracts. So before we get in any further, let's do just a little bit of housekeeping. As Keith said, this is a pretty exciting day, right? So we started this project, we actually called it the Smallingburg Park Recreation Center back in the FY 2017 budget, and that's carried forward to here. So we began our process. We know we're a ways out from the actual construction, but we've got a lot of work to do, right? This is no small task. Part of what our selected AE firm is tasked with is actually doing some community outreach as well, and going out into the public and finding out what people want, right? So very important piece of the process. So we started, Garrett and a few of us went and visited some recreation center facilities. Hudsonville High School just built a beautiful new facility. Grand Valley State University has some amazing facilities that I had no idea, even though my son attended that university for a year, that existed. So really, just some of our internal work to go out and have an understanding of what we want and need before we bring other partners on. One thing I do want to just take a moment, and I want to thank all of the AE and the construction management firms. We had an overwhelming response to both of the RFPs. I think we had 11 AE firms, and we had 21 or 22 construction management firms that responded. It is not cheap for them to do this. There's an investment of time and money that they make to prepare these proposals. We did interview five from each side. That is also a significant investment of time. They show up with usually their entire team, or a large portion of their team. And we knocked those interviews, all five of the AEs in one day, all five of the CMs in the next day, and I was whipped by the time that was over. That is just an exhausting process. We had great partners that came in. The, really, the process was a difficult one to choose, as you can imagine, when you've got 21 responses. But the team that we had, Kemery, Hilton, Garrett, Chris Tork, Andy Canyon, and myself, we didn't take this decision lightly. But I wanted to let the council know that we've had, you know, some questions on, well, how did you then make that decision? And really, a lot of it was experience with similar projects. This is, I'm not going to call it an extremely specialized construction project, but it is specialized, right? So we wanted to make sure first and foremost that both the CM and the AE had significant experience with these kind of projects. We looked at cost, was the interest in the project, what was the fit with the team? Because we are going to be a team, right? We're going to be the three-legged stool. It's the city team, it's the AE team, and it's the construction management team. They're going to work together to bring this project in, you know, on time, within a budget that we all determined with your help, and that our design and our needs are met. You know, Garrett has talked about kind of flying around here and there, and then there's a cancellation, and then they got to get here or there. And we've had a little bit of a discussion downstairs of getting to the civic center to do some of those, which is starting to happen. But really, having that cohesiveness in a location at 16th and Fairbanks that's available to all the people in our community, right? One of the things that's, a beautiful thing about Bows Pool is it's located centrally in our community, and kids in Holland Heights can actually get there if they don't have transportation, although our recreation staff does provide some transportation to get there. Kids from our central neighborhoods can get there. And that's really important, that it's available to everyone in the community in that central location. And we think that we can come up with a building that serves as a 16th Street gateway, right? We're going to go right through the cemetery, hopefully not look around too much in the cemetery, and see a big, beautiful building there that really serves as the gateway into downtown Holland. So with that, we are recommending Integrated Architecture to do the architectural and engineering process for us, do the public outreach process for us. We'll go through a few slides here in a little bit. Their proposal is attached to your agenda tonight. So I would encourage you to go through and look at what they've done in this space. But they have a huge experience. We are familiar with Integrated, right? We've worked with Integrated on the newly finished Waverly Road Fire Station. I think we can all agree that that was a fantastic project. We're currently working with them at the Collin Park Fire Station. So we're comfortable in making that recommendation to you to enter into contract with them. Some of the projects that they included in their proposal, obviously Recreation Center, they've done some higher ed. This is a slide that I liked, because I think this is going to be somewhat similar to where we'll probably end up, right? The RFPs, both of the RFPs that we issued, were somewhat vague. We go into these things with our eyes wide open. We try not to have any preconceived notions. And that, I think, brings us to better outcomes in the end. But we are going to be looking at a lot of gym space and a lot of multi-use space that can be used for basketball, volleyball, pickleball, all the different things that you could have within that kind of a community center. You can see, this is a project that Integrated did. I believe this was in Coldwater, a community center, a recreation center-type project. And then, since we are somewhat of a state-divided, and this room may be a little bit divided, we noticed you of them on the first slide, they have done some work with the other team that kind of plays sports in the state of Michigan. Oh. No. No. So we are, we are very, we're very comfortable in making this recommendation with you. The amount is $939,500 plus a few reimbursables. But we think that's a fair price. We had, again, we had great AE firms that responded. And cost wasn't our first factor, right? The experience and the ability to do this job is the first factor, and that's what makes us comfortable in making this recommendation to you. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on the AE side.
Questions for staff?
Sure.
Ms. Raymond?
Trying to decide what to ask. So I was, I did skim their proposal. I wonder if you could talk a little bit about the process that they go through to gather community information, to have their community input?
Yeah, so we haven't fleshed that out completely, but there will be a public input process. Some of it will take place here, some of it will take place out in the community. We do want to make sure, and we've talked to this with them, that no one special interest group takes over the Recreation Center, that the Recreation Center is multi-use for everyone in the community. And I think anytime you do community outreach, you got to have that in the back of your head, that just because the loudest voice is in the room, doesn't mean that that's what the entire community needs. So we've had those discussions with them at the interview process and a little bit afterwards, and I think that will bear fruit for what we need.
Other questions? Excellent, thank you, Matt, appreciate it. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 12E 6.2?
Move to approve.
Moved by Byrd, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I also wanted to say that it feels like, the reason, the fact that we don't have a ton of questions doesn't mean that we're not paying attention. I think it speaks to the level of expertise and detail that you put in, you and your team put into the process. So I, it's a lot to just, we're not just willy-nilly saying, sure, spend a million dollars and do this. But I just have, over the years, really appreciated your efforts and your team's efforts to make sure that Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and the proposal- And, um, the proposal, we, you know, we did read the proposal and could see that it was, um, and, and, and I think also the number of, of proposals that you received really spoke to how people really want to be involved in a project in Holland and, and how, how the partnership is, you know, going to be effective and efficient, so.
Yes, Ms. Rowan.
Sorry, now that I've had a moment to consider, question popped into my head. So, um, you mentioned that you had quite a few responses and, um, the lowest price or the, you know, the money wasn't necessarily the sole driver. There were other factors. Um, just out of curiosity, how did we stack up with, um, your recommendation versus the other ones that were close seconds? Are we, are we in the ballpark? Give a little, um, reference to the overall standing of the, the, maybe the group that made it to the farthest, uh, and how IE stands up to them.
Yeah, so our low bidder had not done a Recreation Center project or even close. So that is not something that I would recommend to this council. I will, yeah, I, that's just not something that's going to work for us. We needed to have somebody that's done this type of work in the past. We had a number of firms that were right in that million dollars or within, say, five or 10% of it. Um, Integrated is right there with that. We did have a couple of firms that basically threw out proposals that were way higher than that. Um, so they are, I will call, in the sweet spot, where we've had a number of proposals that are a very similar price, um, to do it, without being that really low-ball number that hasn't done a job like this before. Did I, did that end to your question?
Yeah, I mean, just so that we, we have some framework as to, um, where the others stacked up. I think you've addressed it from a financial standpoint, from an experience standpoint, any of the other, any other factors that you wanted to illuminate us, you know, that really took high consideration? Maybe you've covered it already in your, um...
Yeah, I think it was the experience level that they've, I mean, their portfolio, if you go back and look through their proposal, it's significant, right? It's probably the highest level of experience of any of the respondents without having to go back through, all through 21 proposals. Um, and, you know, it, there is a factor, we've worked with them before. We know how they work. I know I can pick up the phone and Darryl will answer, and I will get an answer to a question, um, no matter what that question is in a very short period of time. So it is, there's a, that is a factor in the process. Well, and that's money and time, right? And time, there's a cost to that, right? And we're dealing with that on other projects right now. Um, but having that, um, experience with them as an organization is very helpful. Um, and I think it'll pay, paid evidence in this project as well.
So also in follow-up, would you also say that you have high confidence in their ability to really, um, be on target with those numbers and on target with their timelines? Have you had good success with the work that you've done with them before that they deliver on time, on budget, or, or better?
Yeah, and that'll be that partnership. So that, that's part of the team, because while they can provide us with an opinion of probable cost that we can bring back to the city council before we issue bonds or anything like that, we're going to be leaning even heavier on the construction manager to help provide those budgetary numbers even before we go out to bid, because they will be the ones that, they can make, make phone calls, they can talk to people and understand, okay, this is the basis of design. And really, that's that team moving forward, right? So our construction manager can look at the Integrated team and say, hey, if you build it that way, it's going to be 20% more expensive. If we build it this way, and you design it this way, it'll be less expensive. So really, that's a, a team effort to get to those budgetary numbers. Um, and then it's on the construction manager, once that's been bid out, to, they are the ones that are responsible for bringing the project in on budget. They and me, right? That is my...
And I have another question. That's another, it's a different sort of topic, but, um, with regard to the community involvement or the community input, um, can you just lay that out again as to what that process looks like, who's involved? When does it begin? When does it end? And, and how can we manage it after that horse has left the gate?
Where the horse has left, that's going to be interesting, but how do I, how do I do that one?
Pick any one of those first, or whatever we want to tackle.
Yeah, so there's a community outreach process that will have a number of meetings where the community will be invited in and we'll go out to them to gain, gain input, right? We have to, that, that input with Garrett and our staff's needs as well to come up with a final project. Um, you know, we may have people that come to city council that come in and say, we want our activity to be the number one and only activity in the Holland Recreation Center. And then I think it's up to all of us as a group to say, no, you know, you are welcome there. We will have a place for you to, to do your activity, but we need to have places for other people to have activities as well. So it really becomes a whole group thing, um, on how we manage that.
And just commentary, I would encourage, um, anybody that's listening, watching, that we do welcome that input. Um, I think we as council members would welcome that input. You, of course, are putting it out there, but if they can't reach you in one of those organized, um, venues or, or outreach, they certainly can drop a line to any one of us to weigh in. I mean, I think it's really important that this type of Recreation Center really address what people want. Um, and obviously, we've gone to some pain to make it accessible, but let's make it inclusive as well, so, um, thank you. You've answered my questions and, um, good work. Uh, I look forward to getting more updates in the future.
Yeah, and, you know, Keith and I are always in our office. My phone number is 355-1310. If a member of the community wants to ask a question, call me. Ask for Matt, right? Mallory will punch us right through or I'll get back to you within a day. So I would, like you said, that, that's available to anybody in our community. If they want to provide input directly to me, I'd be, I would love to have it.
Mr. Shay.
Um, does any of this, uh, scope of work at all impact Bow's Pool?
So we, in our proposal, Bow's Pool will have to be discussed. Um, but again, we're not going in with any preconceived notions. Um, Bow's Pool is a separate project, um, from the Recreation Center, but we know that building on the corner of 16th and Fairbanks isn't in a vacuum. We're not in the middle of an 80-acre field. We've got Bow's Pool immediately to the east. We've got Hope College Tenant Center immediately to the north. We've got the stadium to the east, again, in the northeast. So that's a discussion that we need to have as we move along. And there are things, and we've already had those discussions, that we may be able to do within the center itself that can prepare for either a change at Bow's or something different in that area. But Bow's, actually, we did call that out in the RFP as that'll have to be a discussion point at some point in the process.
Thank you. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, and thank you, and just, uh, for the viewing public or anyone here also, um, it's a long proposal, but Kim, your questions about community input and visioning, um, and it probably, it won't be the final version, right? But on 58, on, on the proposal from Integrated Architecture, there's a, there's several pages that talk about kind of typically how they do community engagement and the tools that they use. So, um, while that specifically won't like be announced tomorrow and we'll be having, having sessions next month, right? That's part of the process that will, that will start to lean into, because it's going to be a long process intentionally. So there will be very specific times that, um, we'll advertise that look for specific engagement and opportunities for feedback in addition to what Matt said of just, like, we're here, just call us.
Mr. Bird.
Yes, I wanted to, uh, add a little bit to, uh, what council member Raymond said in regards to not a lot of questions being asked. There's been a lot of planning that has gone into getting to this point. This was brought up back in 2016, so that's more than a couple of years, right? And, um, kudos to you and your team for bringing us this far. Um, speaking on Integrated Architect, um, I, I think using them adds to that level of trust because we've already had, um, a couple of projects with them already. Um, I think we've moved beyond some of the issues that might start with a, a new organization starting those programs. So I, I think that, that's a big piece that, you know, maybe that has not been touched on. And then you look at the project that, that was completed on, uh, 32nd and Waverly, the fire department there, and, uh, it is absolutely beautiful. Um, there's nothing lacking or missing in that, in that whole, uh, project there, I think. So, um, I'm excited about this. Again, this has been something we've talked about since 2016, if I remember correctly. Um, and to your point of this being for the community, that was the goal from the get-go, is this is for the community. Um, we want all community participation in every facet of helping us get to where we want to be and, as well as using it. So we don't want this building empty at all.
Other discussion? And I just want to reiterate also what Mr. Bird and Ms. Raymond said. Um, I often say we plan, plan, plan before a shovel ever hits the dirt. We're years and years into this process. This is an important step in the planning process. Um, we're, we are by no means making a final decision. What we're doing is making a decision that's going to help us in the planning and the design process. Um, I was incredibly impressed, um, by the proposal that they put forward. I was, I was really impressed with the Waverly Road Fire Station. I had no idea they had done all of these other projects as well. Um, and as I went through this proposal, I'm like, wow, they did this too. And wow, they did this, this as well. Um, I, I think that's a real testament to the ability that they have to be able to, um, put together some amazing projects. Um, and, and I really do also want to emphasize, uh, what Ms. Raymond said, that it is a real testament, Matt, to you and to city staff that this many organizations were interested in working with the, with the city of Holland. Um, that, that says a whole lot about you. You, we, uh, we say all the time, you're our go-to guy. You are our get-things-done guy. We know that. This is a testament that the construction community knows that as well, um, that they're interested in working with you, they like working with you, they know that, that, um, it's going to be a good experience for them working with you as well. They know it's going to be a good experience working with the city of Holland. They know that you do your homework. They know that we do our, we do our homework and you, and they know that you are going to make sure that we do our homework as well. Um, and, and the, and I think, Lynn, you're exactly right. The fact that we're not asking a lot of questions is because we've done our homework on this up until now, and we have a lot of confidence in the homework that our staff has done to get us to this point. So, any other discussion that council has before we do a vote on this? We've got a motion, we've got a second. No further discussion. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Freeman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Soul.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. We have an architectural and engineering services firm approved, uh, items 12E 6.3, approved, uh, a contract for pre-construction and construction management services for the new Holland City Recreation Center. Mr. Van Beek.
It's the way it works, right? You're handing it to me, I'll hand it off to Matt. And Matt, when he talked about the team, this is the other member of the team. So Matt, talk to us about this recommendation.
Yeah, so I, you know, I covered a lot of ground with the, the first piece. This one could probably go a little bit quicker, but where we're at is we are recommending that Lakewood Construction, uh, they're from here in Holland, uh, do the construction management, the pre-construction for us. They're experienced, um, they've been vetted by the selection team. They've got a passion for the project, um, and they were a very competitive cost proposal. So, uh, council member Rowan, you had asked questions about the cost. Um, Lakewood was towards the lower end, not the lowest end. When you really looked at the price proposals for all of our respondents, they were very, very close to each other. Um, you know, within a tenth or a twentieth of a percent or so, when you actually did all the different things, site supervision, pre-construction, and then their proposal, um, they are experienced. As you can see, if you look really close there, that is, uh, Kyle Engbers, who is their VP, I believe, is his title, but he's, uh, he actually showed up to the interview wearing a Holland Recreation Coach T-shirt over his clothes. So he seems to be, we think he's very dedicated, very interested in the project because he has a passion for this, you know? Um, I will say with, with the team, we are really focused on kids, right? It's, and I think their, their group is very focused as well on really providing space for the youth of Holland to have a great experience, whether they're playing basketball, or they're in a play, or they're in dance, or they're in an art class, um, just passion for the, the youth of the community. They've done, uh, a number of local projects. This is the Holland Aquatic Center. I believe, Mr. Bird, this is literally in your front yard, across the street. Uh, a large project. Um, I'm sure a few of you have at least been in, if not are regular users. I'm a very regular user of the Holland Aquatic Center with my kid. Um, so they are experienced with this kind of construction. And then they have also done, um, just right across the street in our own backyard here at City Hall, uh, I think they're just wrapping up the renovations of the Eric District Library, among other projects, um, that has similar experience with them. So their cost proposal, um, and my, is included in your, your packet as my laptop just froze up. Um, but we are comfortable in recommending Lakewood Construction to be the pre-construction manager, to walk along through that pre-construction site, um, and then actually do the bidding and the site supervision to complete the project in 2026.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Questions? Ms. Rowan.
Uh, okay, I'm going to go back to the same sort of stuff. Um, you've had good, um, history with Lakewood Construction. It does appear that they have a lot of balls in the air, a lot of projects ongoing. Are, are you, um, also equally confident that they can deliver on time, on budget, uh, given all of the other, you know, they're not spread too thinly for your taste?
No, and this one is far enough out, so it, it's out of ways where they've got capacity and we met with the Cypress Height Superintendent's going to be, um, on the project. So, um, I would say everybody's got a lot of projects going on right now, and that is not a concern for me at that point, that they are going to be spread too thin to actually complete it.
And, um, your experience with them is you've got a guy, you can pick up the phone, you can get instant answers and instant feedback on, uh, what you need to keep that project moving forward.
Yep, um, they're just up the road, so if not, we'll go knock on the office door and get ahold of somebody up there as well.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Yes, Ms. Raymond.
Is that construction management fee, fee pretty standard, that two, two point three?
Two point three-five percent? So it, it ranged a little bit in the proposals, but that is very competitive. Um, it, that is a company that wants to do this project. Uh, we had other proposals that had a significantly higher, um, construction management fee, which, in my opinion, were probably more of the, well, we'll do it, but if you, you're really going to pay us to do it. So I think that is a very competitive piece. Uh, again, all very close when you look at all the ins and outs of the different proposals, but that, that fee is extremely competitive.
Other questions? Mr. Van Beek.
I just want to add for everyone too, as we're talking about different proposals, you'll see in the packet for anyone that wants to look, not only is, are the recommended proposals attached right in the agenda, but then also in the report, you can click a link that you can see all of the proposals and you can spend probably the better part of two days reading all of the proposals from all of the companies that, that wanted to be a partner in this project. So all of that is out there, um, and available for anyone to view.
Great, thank you. Other questions for staff? What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Raymond. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Freeman. Any discussion? Again, Matt, thank you. Thanks, thanks to the team for the hard work that's, that's been done on this. Um, and we, we definitely appreciate that. And for the public, this is, uh, just another step in the process. Uh, as we do with all, all projects like this, there will be extensive public outreach, uh, because we are building this for you. Uh, this is something that we want to make sure is designed for the public, that it's there, uh, to make sure that it meets the needs that you want, uh, that it serves you well for years and years and years to come. Uh, it doesn't do us any good, doesn't do you any good if we don't do it as best as we possibly can. Uh, and that we rely also on you as the public to make sure that we know what it is that you want. So please become engaged in that public process as well, uh, because otherwise we're just guessing what it is that you want. So we will make sure that we have that information out there about how you can become, uh, involved in that public engagement process so you can let us know what you're looking for so we can make sure that we design and build this thing as best we possibly can to meet the needs of the community. Uh, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Raymond.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Soul.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek. Next item on the agenda, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Four things relatively quickly. One, if you may not be following, I think a lot of people maybe are kind of disengaged with some news and everything right now, but at the state level, there's actually a process going on right now, formerly and formerly known as lame duck, which is the period of time between an election, but before the new legislators take position. So there is some activity at the state level that we're being asked to be involved with, either from our state association, the Michigan Municipal League, or in some cases, more kind of pertinent to us. Not huge type things, but there were some possible bills moving on mandatory staffing levels that the statewide association took a position against. We're trying to encourage longstanding position that we're trying to get to take a position on revenue sharing trust fund, and we've had the discussions with you, that revenue sharing sounds like such a noble, kind thing, and it's actually money through the state constitution and other statutory law that's actually, should be required to come to us. So an approach of trying to have a better assurance that that money does come to us, so actively working on our behalf on that. And we're also taking a look at some economic development funding possibilities, not only for housing, but also for larger economic development projects, such as the Waterfront Holland project that we continue to work on. So just to inform you on that, that some discussions and involvement and advocating that I'm doing on behalf of all of you. Any questions, please let me know. We are also already, I can't believe it, but we're starting to ramp up the entire process for strategic planning and budgeting and all those types of things. So kind of as we shift into Thanksgiving and postseason, we're already putting in a lot of work to prepare for January, which is a big month, where we're downloading information to you, where the community has an opportunity to have some specific conversations in addition to all the opportunities, and then have a retreat and really start that entire process We will highlight this for you with some recommended budget amendments, but actually just want to give you a heads up, it's actually within my authority for a dollar amount, but also within the city manager's budget. Just want to let you know, most of you are aware, and particularly those that have been with us for a while, are familiar with the Robertson Brain Health Program, a program that we've done in public safety, both with police and fireside. We were in what I'll call an early adopter, but very successful adopter, and a lot of other departments across the state and the Midwest, quite frankly, have participated in that, to make sure that we're working at optimal levels and giving good service to the community. One thing that we're kind of in a stage is that I'm looking to bring our leadership team through that same program. And within the budget that you've already approved for the city manager's office, shifting something from one line item to another, we can cover that. So it actually doesn't require a budget amendment, but I wanted to let you know that we're doing that, foregoing some things and really investing in that. And I look forward as that being a very important and significant investment, and I presume, assume that you're supportive of that, and as you've heard, updates on that overall program before. So we'll continue to let you know how that goes. We're looking at starting that early next year and run about a six-month program for our executive team. So we're excited about that. And then finally, you might notice that you have a gift on the table in front of you. And I'm sure there is no thought that Keith did that, because it's done very nicely and it has bows and everything on it, which means, no, I did not directly do that work. But really appreciate council, several years ago, you identified an initiative that you wanted to undertake. And that was a process of really communicating your appreciation to our staff across the entire organization. So we kind of bounced some ideas around, and what we did is we just have every staff member identified, and kind of split those names up and gave you thank you cards and information about the person, and we try to jumble those up a little bit, so you don't write, you know, a thank you note to the same person every year necessarily. And that is your little care package, if you would, with everything that you need and pretty simple instructions to do that. Please, I would encourage you, don't overthink it, right? It's just an opportunity to see someone and where they work, and just write a note of thanks. And everything is in there where, when you're done, you just make sure, you know, the one to Joe goes in the envelope addressed to Joe, but outside of that, it's already addressed and has a stamp on it, and then you can just drop it in the mail. So it should be all self-contained. Thank you, in particular to Mallory, for doing all that work for us. You will notice too, we did it a little bit earlier this year, quite frankly, we thought December just gets really busy in a lot of different ways, so we did it earlier. So call it the thank you for Thanksgiving or roundabout that time. Don't feel like you have to get it done in two days or anything, but please take that, understand what that's for, and in advance, thank you for doing that. And that's all I have tonight.
Wonderful, thank you. Next item on the agenda, appointments communications from the mayor. I have four and a half things. One, I forgot to mention the last one, and Keith, this is just a question. Did I hear you say that we have 7,000 people involved in recreation programs? Garrett, is that correct? 7,000 people? We have 34,007 people who are residents of the City of Holland, so if I do my math right, one in five people in the City of Holland are involved in recreation programs. That's pretty impressive.
Higher, I think it's actually 7,500, and my guess is by the time we end the year, if we keep doing year on year, we're going to get to 8,000 and more very soon.
So one in four to one in five people are involved in recreation programs? That's impressive, really, really impressive. I wanted to make sure that that statistic got out there to the public. So that's my half, but that's probably the most important one that I have. I do also, as one of my official ones, I do have a mayoral appointment this evening. I would ask that the council approve Mitchell Mudd to an appointment to the Neighborhood Improvement Committee for a partial term, said partial term expiring on June 30, 2027. Mr. Mudd will replace Ruth Stegeman, who termed out on June 30, 2024, and I would be looking for a motion in that regard.
So move?
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by, that was Mr. Shay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that Mitchell came to our Neighborhood Improvement Committee meeting yesterday.
How wonderful.
He had been invited by a committee member, and I think he's written us letters, letters, and I don't know if he's ever been here, but it was just nice to see him there, and he seems excited about being part of the Neighborhood Improvement Committee. But also, there was a participant from the Ambassador Academy at the meeting as well, who is interested in the Neighborhood Improvement Committee. And so I chatted with her a little bit on the way out, and she's just really excited about finding a way to be involved. So it's already bearing fruit.
Absolutely, absolutely wonderful, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I do also have a mayoral proclamation this evening. It is a proclamation in regard to Small Business Saturday, whereas the City of Holland celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small business employs 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, 59% of U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped at or ate at a small independently-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday last year. And whereas the City of Holland, Michigan supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of Holland, Michigan, and the members of the Holland City Council do hereby proclaim November 30, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in Holland. And we urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small throughout the year. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, this 20th of November, 2024. Mayor Nathan Box. And a little follow-up, Lynn, to the comment you just made. I received a thank you note from somebody who is a member of the Ambassador Academy, which just wrapped up last week, which was incredibly successful. Big thank you to Mary Ann Mandarfield to put that program together, did a wonderful job of organizing that. Keith, big thank you to you for taking 10 Monday nights out of your already busy schedule. For those people who don't know, it was a 10-week program, where members of the community got to get a behind-the-scenes look at how the City of Holland operates. They were designed to be three hours every Monday night. Every single night went long, it went beyond the three hours, mainly because the participants in the program had lots of questions that they wanted to ask. Everyone wanted to stay late. They were so engaged in the program that they often went well beyond the three-hour timeframe. And I received at the mayor's office just a thank you note, and I just, I thought it was appropriate to read it out loud. I won't give the name of the person who sent it, but I just thought it was appropriate for you to hear it and for the public to hear it. I said, "I'd like to thank the city council and the many city employees who presented the Ambassador Academy. I'm overwhelmed with the dedication, enthusiasm of all involved. It's obvious that Holland has a great employer with the pride of all of its presenters. The sessions were informative, entertaining, and fun." And Mary Ann Mandarfield deserves a big bonus. So Keith, I'm going to just leave that right there for you. So wonderful, great job on the Ambassador Academy. Inaugural session was a huge success. I know you know already, we've got people who are clamoring for the next session, which will probably be next fall, where we're already looking at that and making it even better than it was this year. So that's number three. Number four, number four and a half, I have for members of the city council swag for the Parade of Lights, which is going to be taking place before our next council meeting. So on Tuesday night, December 2, taking place downtown is the Parade of Lights. So for council members, before you leave, make sure that you get your lights and other items, so that you can participate in the downtown Parade of Lights, and we invite all the members of the Holland community and surrounding area to come down and celebrate the beginning of the holiday season with all of us. And council members, don't leave before you pick up those items, because I don't want to have to carry them around between now and December 2, and make sure that you get them before the Parade of Lights.
Like the gloves?
Like the gloves, yes. Which, as Mr. Corbin said, I lost all of the white gloves for tulip time last year, so I cannot be trusted with these items, so make sure that you pick them up yourself. And that is all I have this evening. Any motions, communications from council members? Mr. Freeman?
Just a kudos, Matt, I'm assuming that probably between you and the director of many of your different departments that you're responsible for. Downtown looks absolutely awesome with the Christmas lights and everything that's taking place, echoing the parade and all the multiple events that are going to be happening in the next five weeks. Just way to go, and for your team and everything that's taking place, the city looks amazing. So thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Byrd?
One quick item here, magic at the mill. This is our second year doing this. It's going to happen Fridays and Saturday nights from December 6th to the 21st. Thousand LED blossom, LED bulbs dancing and holiday music in the field. Gift shops, kids will have the opportunity to meet center cloths. Tickets range from $5 to $12, and I don't know exactly how to get tickets. Do you know how you get tickets? Is it online?
Online.
All right.
Mr. Van Dyken knows, you know the web address, Mr. Van Dyken?
Yeah, just go to the Women Island website, there'll be links there. I will say, if you're going to go, if you're thinking about going, buy your tickets now. We were sold out virtually every time last year. The weekend times are going to be gone just quick. So if you're thinking of going, go, it's awesome out there. I mean, it is just fun. I'm not a big Christmas lights guy, but it's pretty cool. And as Mr. Byrd said, I mean, it's $12, you can't go and get a sandwich for that anymore. So it's just a fun thing to do.
Absolutely. Any other motions, communications from council members?
I was going to motion to...
Then there's just one more motion that I would entertain this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Rowan, is there support?
Support.
Support by Freeman, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.